To plan the agenda for our stuff, we have a public hearing on Council Order 2016-247. This is a public hearing presented by the City Council in Council Chambers relative to the Home Loan Petition Adoption of Parts of Language, Chapter 32 of the Acts of 2011, an act facilitating urban redevelopment in the city of Quincy, currently pending an ordinance committee in downtown Quincy and the city council. Let go please read the amendment to the law of the bill. Pursuant to the opening law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through a medium. Attendees are therefore advised, if such recording or presentation is being made, whether the procedure or unforeseen by those present, and I do acknowledge information. Councilor Paine.
Present.
Councilor Crowe.
Present.
Councilor Farm.
Present.
Councilor Finn.
Present.
Councilor Harris.
Present.
Councilor Barnes.
Present.
Councilor Lee Yang.
Present.
Councilor Talboudy.
Present.
Present, please. At this time, I would like to welcome you all to the meeting. Okay, the administration has got presentation of the public hearing. Okay, Mr. Phil Gary, if you can.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, and ladies and members of the council, although we are discussing a special council act for downtown development. Seeking the administration, asking the council to revisit a matter that they had acted on previously in 2010, a home loan petition which the city of Quincy submitted to the General Court, seeking from the legislature to adopt a number of measures into law that would confer upon the city of Quincy, a variety of development tools that are akin to the development tools that the city of Boston exercises through the Boston Development Authority and the city of Springfield also exercises through its administrative bodies. The legislation was enacted, it was first adopted by this body unanimously among the members of the council who were eligible to vote. One member was required to accuse himself, but all the other members did vote in support of this and three of the current members were members of that body at that time. The law was a wonderful tool for the city and did anticipate a number of issues the city would face in its development efforts to establish private public partnerships to advance the projects that were then contemplated by the street works development. As we all know, unfortunately, the cities of contract with street works was terminated for cause and this law is still good law except for one thing, it pertains solely to street works. As members of the council are aware, the city has taken on the role of master developer replacing street works so that the city will on a case-by-case basis assume the responsibility for designating developers to develop certain parcels contained within the two municipal parking lots, the Ross Lot and the Hancock Lot. I've been at this not for about a year, close there too, and as we have been working through this process of planning specific projects in the Hancock Lot and working with prospective developers, both of whom have been designated by the mayor, we kept running into a number of issues that relate to the timing and the sequencing and coordination of the construction of both of their developments as well as public improvements. And the last time I appeared before the council, one of the public improvements that we discussed at some length was the need for a parking garage. We all understand from the planning that has occurred thus far that not only will we be displacing parking that currently exists in the Hancock Lot and subsequently in the Ross Parking Lot where the garage should be, and we do have a need to build a replacing garage. The first garage will be planned for the Hancock Lot and will require close coordination with both of the developments that we are negotiating on presently to establish a land disposition agreement for each of those. And I went and had occasion as a result of that to look at this law and saw that a number of the issues that we were running into as we negotiated with the two parties that we're negotiating with, all of those issues have been foreseen by the street works and the planners who were involved and this body and the prior administration and this legislation itself followed. So at the confering at the State House, Senator Keenan, the House members and the majority of the Senate, we inquired as to the process for amending this legislation. And so that's why we're here before you now. This is in a special context. This is not new legislation. We are bound by the rules of procedure of the General Court in both Senate and the House. This petition, I mean this petition would be a late filed bill and it's subject to a restriction. And the restriction is that the rules of procedure do allow technical corrections to be made to this bill to correct the flaw that we have identified, but it does not allow us to expand the scope of the bill in terms of granting the administration new authority, the city council new authority, while the city in general new authority. It is intended specifically to correct the one flaw that makes an otherwise good law currently on the books unusable for the purposes which the city intended before as well as the legislature expressed its legislative intent to give the city that authority. So in that context, we drew narrow corrections to, in essence, delete the street works and replace one land disposition agreement with the prospects that each development would have its own land disposition agreement to be expected involves public property or public improvements, each of which, incidentally, the council must approve if we vote that group. So the council will be very much involved in that and much more so than under the prior arrangement. So that, I had provided members of the council through the demanding with copies of the existing law to the redlined version that shows the technical amendments that were made and since that time, we submitted that document to the legal council for the House and the legal council for the Senate for their review. And they were looking at it in this context of making certain that we were not promulgating the public policies of a new law, but were remaining within the narrow confines of correcting the flaw that occurred when, in the law, in the existing law, when the street work was created. So that's the overview of the law. I do believe that it is critical for us to act confidently on this now that we are in the latest session. We are asking the General Court to enact this before adjournment for the year and they have expressed the willingness to do that as latest this afternoon. And with that, I'll take it through and welcome any questions you can ask.
Thank you, Mr. Gary.
Thank you.
At this time, I would like to open the public hearing to any members of the public wishing to speak in favor. And if you, second call, which one speaks in favor, we also have sign and shoot in the back if you often have to speak or would like to sign in favor. Anyone who wishes to speak opposed to Council Order 2016-247. Second call, anyone wishing to sign in opposition, the signed sheets are also available in the back of the room. With that, I'll call this public hearing closed. Our next public hearing is Council Order 2016-249, being held today 13 November 10th at 6:15, relative to Council Order 2016-249 ordinance, amending Title 17 to add a new section, Section 8.5, entitled Transit Oriented Districts in the city of Quincy, currently pending an ordinance committee in downtown Quincy and the city council. At this time, I'd like to call Mr. Patsis, Mr. Stevens, Mr. Soreen.
Mr. Mr. Gary, pardon me. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, Councilor. I'm Rob Stevens, Principal Planner with the city of Quincy. We have a measure before you, which is the adoption of a new transit-oriented district, zoning overlay district. The intent of this district, I think, starts back in 1959 when the passenger rail service ended here in the city of Quincy. Over the next decade or so, forefathers of this great city worked with the state to get T extended into Quincy. The Acts of 1967 authorized the re-emergence of the passenger rail service in the city and in 1971, the North Quincy, Wallaston and Quincy Center Station opened up. In the years after that, further extension occurred with the opening of the Ranger Station and then the Quincy Adams Station. I think it's clear for all of us that if you send any of those stations, that those were developed and focused on collecting cars and storing cars all day. Oftentimes, it happens after the detriment of establishments where those stations were located, at the detriment of folks that may want to walk to those stations or use bus service to get to those stations. Today, those stations are 45 years old, they're reaching the end of their service life and the MBTA has plans that are coming forward for either redeveloping those sites or going into major overhauls or renovations of those sites. Last year, the T finished getting the RFQ, Request for Proposals process, for development opportunities in the North Quincy. A group, the Zudo Atlantic, was, folks chose them, had three development opportunities and that was followed by the city being notified that the Wallaston Station will be on the docket for major renovations. It was the Quincy Adams Station on the docket for major renovations as well. This is on the heels of us living with the property adjacent to this great hall, the Quincy Center Station having lost the functional use of the parking garage for the last several years. And it's in the city's efforts on revitalizing downtown, the adoption of Quincy Center zoning ordinance in 2005, followed by urban renewal planning launching. In our efforts at trying to spear and redevelop at Quincy Center Station, that has led us to forward to this council consideration, a proposed TOD zoning overlay district that will mimic a lot of the development opportunities that we tried to jumpstart with the Quincy Center zoning ordinance. Now, some of the highlights of the zoning ordinance before you would be the ability to increase some of the density. We recommend ten-story heights. We also recommend 325 square feet for development density that mimics downtown. We also reduce the dimensional requirement, setbacks, those types of things. That's the same thing we did here in the downtown as well. And then we also wanted to provide a very clear permitting process for those folks that are going to come forward with any development requests. And that clear permitting process is identifying the planning board as a special permit rating authority for any uses that come forward in this TOD zoning overlay district. Now, our experiences with downtown in relaxing some of the zoning dimensional requirements, we picked up a lot of those details in, by creating a design guidelines document. And when this measure was submitted to this council, the planning department retained the services of the ESC group. There were also our urban planner consulting team that have created draft design guidelines that that document was provided to this body. And in it, that is where a lot of those details, it talks about the city's expectations for private redevelopment as they go forward. I have here with me tonight Jeff Fasser from the ESC group and he will be prepared to talk a little bit about his firm's assistance with the city in developing those guidelines Last night, I attended was a part of the planning board meeting where this measure was taken up in a public hearing. Earlier today, I provided for the council the communication from the planning board with the affirmative recommendation of approving this TOD zoning overlay district. There was one change that was recommended, it was forth by the department after consulting with the ESC group. It's in Section 8.5, 0.3.1 deals with minimum lot size for good development. As zoning stands before you, as was submitted before you, there was a five acre minimum lot area required, I believe the original intention, it usually they need one major development on the site. After consulting with the ESC group, we feel that lowering that to one acres is, would be appropriate and would allow for greater diversity of development coming forward. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions on the zoning ordinance. At this moment, or if you wait until after Mr. Fasser makes his remarks of his time.
Councilor Finn.
Just to be clear, this is a public hearing.
Correct.
So we have this agenda from the special council meeting tonight, so if you want to raise questions or issues, you'll all be present.
Which I think committee meeting after this. Then the council meeting.
Committee meeting, that's correct.
Will all be questions of the committee meeting for the public hearing before? Mr. Fasser, will be a secret, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Lieutenant Jeff Fasser, a certified planner and landscape architect with the ESC group, happy to be here tonight. I just want to give a quick overview of what we mean by transferring districts and then get into some of the specifics about the zoning as well as guidelines, a brief overview of those. But I also know that Mr. Patsis had passed this out to all of you at the beginning of this discussion. TOD is a phrase in a process that's been happening across the country. TOD is typically referred to as transit-oriented development or in this case, transit-oriented districts. It's basically development tied into transportation locations, as Rob has mentioned earlier. As you all know, especially in this country, transportation and land use have evolved over time, completely development happening in places where transit occurs, seaports that have been, development occurred around train lines, train routes, and then as the automobiles came into being, it was clustered around the highway system interchanges. And what we're finding now is an interest and a desire for many people to move back into urban areas close to transit so there's less of a need and less of a liability on vehicles to get around, who are taking more advantage of the transit stations. We were lucky to have four transit stations in Quincy and transit-oriented development certainly from a planning perspective is an appropriate thing to address at your transit stations. As Rob mentioned, it's already been addressed in the downtown area, so we're looking at the three other stations in Quincy and how Quincy's are. The three stations are North Quincy, Wallaston and then Quincy Adams, those areas that are within, that are being recommended for this overlay district and they're outlined in the design guidelines in the past, as I'll be. I also want to make it clear that this is an overlay district, so the underlying zoning still is in place. These are overlay districts that then give a property owner or developer the opportunity to come in and either proceed with development using the underlying zoning as it is or proceed with development with the proper approvals under this TOD overlay district. And the overlay district sets out certain parameters when it comes to dimensional requirements, Rob touched on some of those, the types of uses that are allowed in a transit-oriented district, you have the types of uses that are not allowed, parking that's required, parking relief that can be requested, and also, as Rob mentioned, the approval process that someone could go through to do transit-oriented development in these districts if they so desire and by issuance of a special permit by the planning board. To further accentuate some of the reasons for transit-oriented development, the benefits of the community and in the first page of the ordinance, the proposed ordinance talks about the purpose of transit-oriented development. We've worked with the city and took a step further to develop design guidelines for these areas so that again, as a developer who's in, they know what the city is expecting, but also these guidelines help protect the integrity of these areas, the integrity of the neighborhoods around them by setting up the city's expectations of how development would occur within these areas for things such as streetscape character, what's going to happen along the streets, next to the development, how are those streets going to be connected in the neighborhood, the need for public open space if required because there's going to be more people moving into these areas in a place directly as well as a place to live. Again, the parking and transportation needs, taking advantage of these as intermodal locations, we have bus service, we have T service, bicycle circulation, pedestrian circulation in and out. Architectural design guidelines, again, so that the redevelopment fits within the character of their neighborhood. Sustainability issues dealing with, you know, reduce air pollution, heat pollution, stormwater management, things like that. The other point I want to make clear is that when we develop these guidelines, we want to make sure that these areas, these transit stations were completely accessible to existing neighbors and if anything, their accessibility to these stations to be enhanced for this TOD development. So easy access in and out, in many cases, enhanced access in and out of these random locations for current people living in these neighborhoods around the stations, I think that's an important point to make. It's not just for the TOD development itself, it's to attempt to enhance the entire neighborhood around TOD locations. So then with that, if there are questions later on, I'll be here to answer them, but I'm forward to public comment.
At this time, I would like to welcome any member of the public to come forward to speak in favor of Council Order 2016-249. Second call to speak in favor. You just have to state the name and address directly, please.
My name is Dr. Eric Cohen. I am a physician here in Quincy and I also own a property. One of my causes of property happens to be in the redlined area of the North Quincy District. I don't necessarily face any other problem with the proposal and whatnot going on, but I must say that I've been notified of this whole thing about a week ago when I got the two pieces of paper in the mail telling me that there was a meeting last night with the planning board, a meeting tonight of the, this committee here. And I understand that there's a whole bunch of information that was supposed to be, relates to these districts here, and the only thing I received last night, last thing was a brochure about this. I would love to know what the details are, who I can talk to about getting more information on this, and I assume this is probably going to pass and a good idea and whatnot, but if I wanted to redevelop my parcel in the North Quincy District there, I'd love to know what I need to do to start that process going, who I need to talk to and what the details are, what it needs to look like.
Sure, I would make more information if you touch base with the city clerk's office as well, if you keep our references on file, if you'll do all the paperwork through the city clerk. We also have a blog at the posted office of the city website that I stock to offline in the same community that we have pending before us.
And I would also say that, I mean.
Your city councils also are resources. I know when you spoke, you mentioned you own one of the parcels, would you put your address for the record?
It's the North Quincy parcel.
Right, so street address, part of the property.
75 Main, not true.
Two 75 Main.
Sorry.
That's okay, thank you.
But I mean, it would be helpful to know what the details of this so that I, if I decided I want to develop that, I can go ahead and proceed with that process there and know what's going on.
So in inspection services offices as well as your board council, would also be creative sources for you.
Okay, appreciate it.
We see from the clerk committees, this app was published two weeks in advance and the public notice was as per required and the locals can get our release on.
I'm really just, that's a general notice, but I guess I maybe feel like I'm more connected with this because redline is around my property.
Correct, and what the other notification would be for this would have been the planning board is on, through the, through the planning board, I think, Mr. Patsis is there, you have directed it in attendance last night and located, right?
Thank you, I'll reach out to them.
Thank you. Councilor Finn.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I'm just going to mention that I can specifically regard the technical implications of the overlay or whatever the planning, you know, the budget, to walk through that.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Just to clarify, also for the record, a butter, letters or mails to the transit orders through the city council office, so, in the planning department, so those dual notification options sent out through the mail. And Councilor Harris, I believe you have two guys.
To address, we're going to have a community meeting on Tuesday night at, you should have bought a letter in the mail if you're in either my or Ian's or, you should have received a letter either yesterday or the day before. I have a community meeting on Tuesday night in Kennedy Center at six o'clock to be able to see all the information on the project that's being, going to be proposed and I think it's a workshop situation, so please, I, before, I believe before anything is voted on, we're going to have the community meeting, that's the way I feel about it, so.
I appreciate that. I've actually opened all of my own mail in my office for the past 30 years and that envelope has not crossed my desk yet.
I hope that will, this is about the zone, but I mean, okay.
Thank you.
But there will be a community meeting on Tuesday night.
Right. The location for your community meeting, for the Apple here? The date, time, location of your community meeting?
It's 15th and Tuesday night at six o'clock, 9:00.
Great, yeah, I hope you're interested in the community meeting.
It's Tuesday, right?
Yep.
Yes, it is.
Anybody in house in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of Council Order 2016-249? Not wishing to speak, you're wanting to sign the side sheets, are in the barrel from the rug? With that, anyone who speaks in opposition, Council Order 2016-249? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Megan Gutas and I'm in the 40 Grand in there. And I'm not necessarily opposed, but I have some serious questions. We had a meeting recently about the parking and traffic in the area and I don't have very far from the, from the Wallaston City. And the non-people who spoke up about the parking, difficulty with the parking and the traffic in the area, it was, it was open talk and cars cutting through neighborhoods. And cars cutting through neighborhoods, Willow Street area, Oakdale, George Street. And coming here tonight, I came down South Central, talking on South Central, which is in Northwood. And in order to come down the street, I had to pull over and let someone up the street because of the passing of the bus. And what concerns me is that parking is bad to begin with, very bad. And when you're coming out of Grand Hill, trying to get onto South Central, you cannot see around the cars, it is impossible to see around the cars. And this was brought up in the meeting at the other meeting. Certainly, it's known, steep of rock is our transport. A group of us got together, spoke with Steve, and I think there was a set of signs put up in our area to allow parking. And that has helped tremendously. We still have people parking, we find our houses on Grand Hill and all three areas, getting out of the cars with the brake brakes and on the other two. And this was every day, so people who lived there, if they were out of the water and they came back, they placed the car, they couldn't have left. As a matter of fact, for the past year, what my neighbors had a driveway to put in, those neighbors, on occasion, had my driveway and another neighbor's driveway because of the black car. And nobody's supposed to be entering the parking lot, people who are not going to have the cars. However, it's not everyone. And we are now at a state where people are having to have a driveway to put in so they can get their cars parked and they can home from work. Having other cars in the area just seems, I don't know what it is. Density is incredible. And I was going down, was trying to go down Brook Street the other day, and took a left on Brook, and in front of me, there was a car stopped, so I saw. And the woman finally came along with the bad boy car and she waved me on. Tried to get around her car. There was another vehicle parked in front of her, it was a van. The van was making a living and she was making a living. There were cars in the middle of the street, you could not go down Brook Street. What street did right across is, you know, coming to Wollaston Street. So to be lifting the restrictions and leaving things more open to the neighbors and the area which is already overcrowded seems quite, quite foolish. You're going to have more accidents, you're going to have more anger, and I don't believe it's understandable.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Hi, John Overstrel, sixty-two, Grand Wall Road. I was at the planning meeting last night, and first of all, the North Quincy Transit Station has around like eight acres, it's around five acres in the plan on the Wollaston and about thirty-one acres in the Quincy Adams. So, when they're saying going from five acres down to one, that's an eighty percent reduction. I'd say right off the bat, if there was any recommendation, I would maybe lower that to maybe three, because if you do it at one acre, that means thirty-one different people can do projects together, it would be just a mess. Those other people who made this report, they recommended that, and the parking, it says one per dwelling unit, you guys can make that one per bed, that would help, that's what we need, that's the minimum parking we need. These are not posts you stand for in the battle we are in, and then the other is per dwelling unit. The five hundred square feet per dwelling unit is already insane. At least make that the minimum, maybe we can make that the minimum and we can raise the business C to one thousand or two thousand. And number seven, about getting rid of part of the requirement, just get rid of number seven totally, there's something in there that says that they can waive some of the parking requirements. I mean, you know, Councilor Harrington was there talking about maybe adding to the district across from Wollaston Train Station. We are definitely rushing through this, and they need your approval to do this, and you can make changes, just like they asked you to make changes to the acreage, you can add more park. We all know, I mean, Council of Crawl, I know you love park. When I think of parking, I think of Council of Crawl. It would be helpful to citizens for parking, okay?
You guys need some tea, I forget.
But bottom line is that we have to look out for the people who've lived there forever. It's really overcrowded, we can't let them get too dense, and we don't want too many developers on the same lot. You know, it'd be nice to have a master developer on each station and it'd really be nice to finish U R D P number four and just, you know, one project at a time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
My question is, I'm getting in the room. I might notice some surprises to some of you, but I'm not against that. In fact, I really respect it when the street works to develop, fortunately, they're not really burnt out. And one of the things that they did is that they spent months in the community meetings looking for input, explaining what you were planning to do. Most of the meetings, they have a stack that needs to hand out. We've got here two week, the notices that are done by the rules, you have two week publications, udders going out, blah, blah, blah. You can come to City Hall, see documents, I'll take Councilor Forrest's word for it, and some of this stuff's online, City of Quincy can really use a friendly website. This isn't the way to do it. People need to have a clue. Now, in terms of the three parcels, Quincy Adams, Wollaston, and North Quincy, those are the three of the largest remaining fairly open, he's the button here, now, left. We've got to make sure they're right. I don't have a problem with density on those sites. You have to have sound density, I'm not saying it's going to make it feel warm and fuzzy. Let's look at Quincy Adams as the biggest point of concern. It's presented as transit oriented development, it's not. It's really a transit strip mall. You're putting density right next to a train station, it's out of the limit of smoke, there are far birds, there's no convenience nearby, there's no shopping, you can't walk to the grocery store. They might play CBS in there, but I doubt it because you don't have the density within the neighborhood. I don't know where they're going to go for dry cleaning. If they want to go see a movie, they got to get a zip card, take a camera, head card or brain trigger, take the train to Boston, and go to AMC, Boston, Comedy Center. Transit oriented development works when we put density on top of density. You look and talk about building over the pipe for the fans. You've already got, you've got family, park right there, you've got movie theaters, you've got universities, you've got museums, all of which are close, and public transit, not only you get green lines, pub lanes, you've got bus lines and grid system, you can get anywhere real fast. Quincy, you want to get anywhere, you got to go to Boston. Go to Boston, downtown Bronx, you got to try and change to somewhere else and go, I don't know, Longwood, whatever. The project around Quincy Adams is going to look more like a parking project. You may get some community interest, but we don't even know how many people are in Kenfax that are commuting downtown or that are committed somewhere else. Because the plan is, they're assuming everybody's going to take the train to go to Boston, Cambridge, or somewhere that they can't go there. We don't know that. Now, we look at Wollaston, you've got a little bit more going on there, but your type of parking area, what's the part that you really need? Yeah, you've got the movie theater, you've got dry cleaners and restaurants, but there's not a lot there. North Quincy, similar problems, we're not there. Without simple agreement, I'm concerned, how much parking do you really need? We have no metrics. Nobody's going out to talk, going to sample across the street at Kenfax community, nobody's talking about a place, nobody's talking about people who've just moved in the Westchester. We're flying by, we're working on recommendations, we're working on recommendations and metrics that are really much more appropriate for somewhere like Cambridge or Interwalt. Not a community that at the end of the day is in a single community line in the boroughs. Let me think about that.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? We also welcome to sign in opposition, sign in shape card, even we are up front. Would that be called as parking, like carrying clothes? But now, I mean, now that it's called to order, the ordinance committee meeting, first matter, uh, actually, the first one. Okay.
Pursuant to the opening remarks, any person making an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through a medium, intending that they accord advice or sectoral points or propositions are being made, but if perceived or under scrutiny by those present, then that is acknowledged and permissible.
And, uh, members of the district's call the law.
Council Jane.
President.
Council Hope.
President.
Council Home.
President.
Council Frank.
President.
Council Harris.
President.
Council Hughes.
Present.
Council Lee.
Present.
Council Tom.
Chief.
Chairman.
President.
Thank you. With that, the first matter on the agenda, Councilor 2016-247, formal petition, adoption of corrective amendment motion to Chapter thirty-two of the Acts of the eleventh Act facilitating over redevelopment in the city of Quincy, we previously announced the gathering and had a presentation from Mr. Bill McCarry. With that, Council Hughes, motion, just a motion to accept? Over our Council of Quincy's twenty-fourth motion on the floor. Motion approved. Correct. I also want to note we have a positive recommendation from the planning board as well. On the motion, Councilator.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Gary, for being here today. I have a couple of questions for clarification. I wondered when we're looking and reviewing this document, it's a lot of technical questions with the street boards, Adam, maybe for eight designated developers who can use this document for any development that comes into the city. But reviewing and going through is, I think, it's a good opportunity to just clarify some of the language in here, to make sure that we report the entire document as a whole as sound. So I have a couple of questions for clarification to take. The first is under, the first page, under city parcels, it mentions the Ross Barage and Hancock parking lot, that are the parcels that we wanted to be disposed of. So, when we as a city dispose those deposits, how are we evaluating that, the price on that? Are we doing assessment or are we doing a certain price above the assessment?
Yes, we would do all of the above. Any land that will potentially be sold by the city disposed of in the language of the law will be subject to an independent appraisal, and when that appraisal comes in, we also have a second appraiser review that independent appraisal. It's also customary for prospective developers to have their own appraisers put forth an appraisal, so it's not simply based upon what the, what the assessed value of the property may be to the extent that there's the property subject to an assessment.
And when we see copies of those appraisals when they come in?
Oh, absolutely. That all gets involved into a land distribution agreement, which is vigorously negotiated and vigorously reviewed by the Thompsons, so the council will be very much involved in that process.
And then, second question I had, at the end of that paragraph, it talks about developing city parcels but also privately owned land. So I know that we're reviewing, I know that we're reviewing this document today for the public parcels, which is under an LDA, but it mentions here in the document that we also apply this one twenty-one A agreement to privately own it too, so we can take these tools and use it for private property as well?
Well, that language as it relates in the law that currently exists and as we're proposing to amend, I think, will seize situations where there will be a combination, principally the combination of private property and public property, where they're both combined. The appraisal process really relates to just a couple of components of that. So, for example, in one of the projects that we have under negotiation currently, we're doing what we characterize as land swaps. We, they are giving the city certain portions of land that they own privately, and the city is selling to them portions of the Hancock lot to accommodate their project. In case referencing, we're requiring, as we're trying to require for all new buildings along Hancock Street, a ten-foot setback. So, they own currently right up to the edge of the sidewalk, we're setting that back, so we're sitting in essence taking that land as part of our swap, and it pushes them back into the Hancock lot, and we're looking at selling them a portion of that land in the Hancock lot to accommodate the project, the negotiation.
So when it says the city council and other department, it's not implying the city council or, it's implying the city council with pieces apart?
That's correct.
On the sixth, one of the documents, on the second page, under section twelve A, they are towards the bottom, Assistant Department shall make, and from time to time, they amend reasonable rules and regulations for securing eligible projects in the area of the New York and New York District under section twenty-one A, and no rule regulation or standard of the Department has a complete, child, child rights in this enterprise. So, when it refers to the Department here, which department are you referring to that can make these changes?
That entire section actually amends a law that's the law that created the city planning department, so when it refers to the Department, it's referring to the city planning department.
So they can make any changes afterwards?
That's correct, that's the way the law is now. That particular section, we may virtually no substantive amendments to what's elected, we substituted the word "the" for the word "a."
No, I understand, but if the planning department doesn't make any changes, is that twenty-two, this is changes to the LDA or changes to the one twenty-one A agreement?
One, that, that section principally relates to one twenty-one A arrangements for payments and move taxes. Currently, that's a portion of the law that I referenced in my presentation. The authority for doing that will go from the State Department of Housing and Community Development to the City of Quincy acting through its planning department. And that's authority that the City of Quincy will now have, as it was intended in two thousand and eleven, similar to the authority that the City of Quincy, the City of Boston has in the City of Boston.
Okay, but if the planning department does make any changes to the one twenty-one A agreement with the twelve A, will that still be encompassed after an LDA that would then come into?
Oh, that's, absolutely, every LDA comes to the, to the council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor.
You know, again, Mr. Gary, thank you very much in terms of some of the work that I'm interested in. But I just check, I understand also, you've actually legislated, sort of viewed this and suggested changes as well.
That is correct.
And, um, I guess between the piece that you had created that was of the redline section, which is very helpful in terms of saving itself, so basically, I just want to make sure that I understand what we're doing here. Is that we previously had a formal petition that was focused around a single particular master development, the street works, that essentially, for lack of a better term, designate the mass, this master developer had certain requirements, and what we're doing here, the women, the women's, is essentially cleaning out the old formal petition that we had, and is basically redirecting that in relation to planning and community development acting almost in the development role, or master development role, or more, as you eventually sort of spirit of redevelopment for, is that in that?
That is absolutely correct.
So, in relation to this, one question I was just having, is there any substantively new matters? Is that, that is absolutely correct. So in relation to this, one question I was just having, is there any substantively new, um, matters within this particular thing that distinguishes it aside from removal of streetworks, the single master developers? Anything that we should really, uh, recognize within this as being substantively new or different that didn't exist in the previous formal petition?
There is, there is an aspect to this as it relates to the city and its capacity as a master developer, uh, having the authority. The prior formal petition, all development was pursuant to national law 121A and anticipated different 121A arrangements, removal of taxes. This would take bottomless into the fact that we, the city, will be encumbering developments that are both covered by Chapter 121A and its companion law, the common thread to it is the government rule act 121. So there'll be some of the 121A and some of the 121.
Which, again, is just bringing a formal petition for me, most specific.
With, with the new circumstances the city is in.
I guess one of the things that I, the redline, I got a little bit of confusion. They changed, maybe some of the other things, but if you look into the redline version, they talked about the section nine, um, and I, and I don't know if I'm just not finding it, my attention deficit disorder stuff can really kick in when it comes to some of these things.
Sometimes it's logical. We do enough of these, uh, developments are permanent condition.
There was a, there's some reference in Section 9 of the red, that I can, I really never seem to make, making a reference to the Quincy World Housing Trust. Yes, that payments made by the designated, and I see that where that is, where it exists within the redline version, but where does that, where is that contained within this particular version?
It's, it's still, it's still in there, um, in the clean, the clean version. I'm, I'm looking at, at the redline.
Yeah, I'm wondering where it is in relation to the four, four, four pages. Is that, and if this is the annual order?
It's, I, I see them in the redline version, it's on page, uh, two, uh, Section 9, towards the bottom of the page.
Right. I, I see that, but this, but the one we're actually, the order that's before us in is, is this one, correct? This is, it's the, it's the 2016-247.
Councilor, page four, middle of the section 12, you have a parentheses being, is that what you're referring to?
I don't even know what it sounds like. I have no idea what it is.
The, uh, the redline document.
Uh, yeah, the redline document, let me speak quick. The redline document reflects for us, it was an aid or tool to help us understand what was changing within this document. And what I'm suggesting, what I'm asking is that I, there seems to be a Section 9 here, it's completely a little bit different than the Section 9 in the redline version. And I, so I'm just trying to figure out, uh, the confusion does arise, and I have to confess, I've worked with this for several weeks, um, I got into a few several plans myself, um, but the Section 9 refers to, um, the affordable housing trust that we found on page two of the, of the, uh, the black line, uh, version, if you look down toward the, below the middle of the page, it is there. Section B of Section 12C, Section 898 of the Acts of 1973, as inserted by said, Section 4. So the confusion arises in that particular section. So that's, that's, in other words, most of the things that occurred in there are language and corrections, that the things that existed in the earlier land disposition agreement were made.
That's correct. Nothing other than the designation of streetworks was changed. No, no substantive changes were really made from.
Because these, these are the actual amendments that are going forward, and that is correct.
That's correct.
Got it. And so, so that's such a useful building. I just wanted to be, be clear that it, it reminds me, that these, these are the actual amendments themselves. Yes, pay attention. You're welcome.
Just, just for clarification of what's in the packet, the proposed amendments, the redline version, then the cleaner, final versions, the third, staples, into the back of the packet. They have comments from Councilors. Councilor Lee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, in a nutshell, if you really looked at this correctly, I'm not, this is actually a divorce of streetworks. Like, is this saying it was, we're throwing you off, off the paper, off the document, and you're no longer on here? Is that correct?
Well, that, that, that occurred when the Council approved Act 84, and it previously occurred when the contract between, uh, streetworks and the City of Quincy was terminated, but it's formalized in, uh, the amendment of four. The law is a, is a separate document that empowers the city to undertake certain public-private partnerships. This law now will allow the city to take, make those public-private partnerships with other designated developers, correct?
That in a nutshell is the next process, which is a formal petition, correct, before us tonight?
Yes.
Is anywhere in here that you ever say again, "three works" is in this document?
No, it's, that, "three works" is deleted.
Deleted.
Yes, quoted.
That's all I have, thank you so much.
Councilor Paul McGee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Gary, I just wanted to first thank you for your diligent responses to a couple of letters, uh, I think it was a couple, right? Two, one. Yes. To the questions that I sent you to answer, um, which, uh, are in the public record. I don't know if you can, I'm on the website or something, that, yeah, it's a letter from you answering questions about, um, what we're doing here. So I'm trying to talk less, to, you know, ease the burden of my colleagues up here of having to listen to me, so the more we can do, we gotta care a lot, chat a bit. So the more we can do, you know, I, I have questions and I need to have them answered before I'm comfortable loading it up, so I'm happy to do that, uh, to write and try to make those, that stuff.
And welcome.
Part of the public record, you know?
Yes.
It's important, it's not a secret communication around. But, um, so thank you for your, for diligent responses. Uh, a couple of follow-up, follow-up questions. On, um, and I know that, you know, we're trying to, everything's intermingled here, right? So the LDA is something different, we'll have an opportunity to, uh, to weigh in on the LDA.
Correct.
The parts of that, so I don't want to go too far afield on it, but, uh, just in response to the November 1st letter, uh, question number nine, where I asked you about how the parking garage cost to the developer would affect the amount invested calculations for a return on the, uh, section you can see, uh, and you indicated to be included as a cost, uh, and then, so I understand that. And then tonight, when you were answering some questions from Councilor Liang, you were talking about the, the LBC project, uh, where we're essentially trading sidewalks for parking lot, um, which is unfortunate, I think, in general for them, that they have to go through that process, that it can't be easier when it's something so clear cut as, why you need a sidewalk, and then giving them, you know, trading the front space for back space, they have to go between LDA and that, and that's, you know, I'm sure they're paying some attorney a fortune for that, so I feel bad about that. But, um, are we selling, in the other potential proposal, would we be selling the Hancock lot?
We, we will be selling unfortunately Hancock lot approximately, or operate with thirteen thousand square feet.
Okay. And so that it has a value?
Oh, it definitely has a value. It's being appraised, uh, presently.
Okay, and will we get a copy of that before the LDA comes in, appraisal? Can we, let me, can we get a copy of that appraisal prior to?
Yes.
Okay. And in terms of, and again, I'm going too far afield on this, no, but, um, in terms of the, the parking garage, and the, we're not buying it back like we were under the streetworks, right?
The, it ultimately will be a municipal garage, and the city will own it and the city will pay for it.
When? Will the city pay for it?
Well, it's subject to the LDA, but, um, presently, we are doing a, a preliminary design, come up with the, uh, the pricing, and it would be the city's, uh, plan to pay for the garage until it's constructed.
Okay. So it's still very similar to the streetworks model of, uh, were those implementing infrastructure improvements?
I was not as familiar with the streetworks model, but I, I would not, uh...
But the basic premise is the same.
The basic premise is the same.
They were going to build $289 million worth of public improvements. Then after they developed, um, showed their ad verum, uh, additional taxes were enough to offset any bonding payments, then we would have to bond to buy what's put us back, we would buy them back. Same essential premise of, for the most part?
I, I can't speak to the streetworks model, but that's our premise currently.
Okay. And I know all we're doing here is removing streetworks and making the city the master developer. And I, uh, and I'm, and I'm sorry, obviously, you know, that happened here, now, um, but, um, you know, there never really was a discussion before this body about the city becoming the master developer. There's never a policy decision that this body ever had anything to do with. There was, so talk about it in the last council, uh, by a council member who's on the floor here, about how that's a significant shift in the way we're approaching downtown. And it's, you know, this, no use of crying over this whole note at this point, because we are, you know, we're halfway, three quarters of the way down the road at this point. But, yeah, I felt like it's important to note for the record that this, this body never really endorsed in any official way, the city becoming the master developer. Uh, the mayor appeared before this body and said that we're separated from streetworks. And then we had, some months later, we had consultants come up about what the path forward was, excuse me, for, you know, that's when Redgate came up with their report, for, for developing downtown. But there was never, oh, or any, uh, any action taken by this body where we said, yeah, we're, we're on board with the city becoming the master developer. I, I was concerned then, I remain concerned that, you know, the city being in the master developer business, uh, whether or not we're, we're well suited for that, but, um, again, we're far down that road and, and, you know, to, to, to change the policy direction, the city being, uh, I think would only risk, uh, further delay complications in downtown. Uh, as it relates to the specific language, the, um, the changes that Councilor Liang was asking about, with the language in Section 12A, about once approved, the planning, uh, department could change the language. They can't change the fundamental numbers, right? The 121A that's approved by this body?
No, once, uh, not without, I mean, back to the law.
Okay. That's all I, thank you, Mr. Gary.
Thank you.
Councilor Finn, next.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I think I, I might have led to a little bit of confusion, because, and I just want to, uh, streetworks was a master developer, and what the city is doing is not, again, becoming the master developer. What's happening is the planning and community development is acting similar to the law that, you gotta forgive me, though, because I can't remember their names, but they operate, right? What, in terms of being kind of approving and overseeing that, that things are somewhat consistent moving forward, that, so it's not technically a master developer, but I do believe that that was, if it's going to be voted on or not, I don't know, but I do know that's clearly a part of the main suggestion was moving forward, that we were working in a different situation, recognizing that a master developer, there's no one, no one quite willing to invest in what the implication of a master developer, somewhat automatic in relation to streetworks would, would be feasible or realistic. So I, I just want to make that clarification, that they're not really, the city isn't acting as a master developer.
I'll accept that, that clarification, yes.
We did receive a positive recognition from the city office, the planning, of the planning board, where the planning board did submit an amendment, correct? Want to speak to that, Mr. Gary?
I'm sorry.
I have this one. So, yeah, we made a motion on the floor, um, to approve Councilor 2016-247. For, if we call the vote.
Council Jane.
Yes.
Council Hope.
Yes.
Council Bob.
Yes.
Council Finn.
Yes.
Council Harris.
Yes.
Council Doos.
Yes.
Council Liam.
Yes.
Council Paul McGee.
Yes.
Chairman Fars.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, with that, I just wanted to make note, we also had on the agenda, the season Councilor 2016-248. We are going to leave that matter in committee. If this matters, we'll launch Councilor 2016-249, with the ordinance from amendment Title 17, add to Section 8.5, entitled Transit Orange Districts.
Thank you all, I thank you, Madam Chair.
I'm going to make my own comment.
Thank you. Previously, in our hearing, we did have a presentation from Mr. Steve, the planning department, as well as Mr. Fasser. Anyone, anyone has any questions for Mr. Stewart or Mr. Fasser? Council Jane.
Hey, I just have a few questions, thoughts, um, so, yeah, I, I kind of agree, we've heard some public meetings, I do agree that I think this has come very fast, um, you know, uh, I, looking at how the downtown is being seen and its redevelopment, I think that, you know, there was careful consideration in how we view the downtown area and how we want to see its future, and I think that this is, this is very quick, like, to be looked around, but, so just have a couple of questions before we, like, how, um, how much public opinion has actually stopped into this ordinance and into the draft, um, guidelines, signed guidelines?
How much public opinion?
Yeah.
Um, it was, uh, what we hear every day, um, there's been normal meetings with the public, still on the public hearing last night, as well as the public hearing tonight.
Okay. And I'm sure if you're looking for support for this tonight, um, you know, I know Counselor Harris and I have a community meeting coming up next week to talk about the proposal that I want to incite, and I, I don't, I don't feel comfortable taking a position on this particular, uh, these guidelines and ordinance, tonight before we have a meeting. Um, I know that that is being positioned as a workshop, so where people can apply their opinion, I'd probably like to see elements on, um, I guess another MBTA site that's being proposed, uh, so, you know, before we do that, uh, I'm not really comfortable with taking control on this, and moving it out of committee. Um, I also just, you know, for, for the record, want to state that I think that this is a very, um, I think it's a good start, but I think there's a long way to go. I think that we're looking at three different distinct neighborhoods within the city of Quincy, trying to bucket them into one, one doctrine here, and I think we should actually be looking at those regions independently. Um, I think that, you know, however densely we like to consider the Boston area, the Adams area, or the Tea Station Park, one of the two mythology in many respects, um, you know, given, sort of, in what I mean, we're just talking about one project with North Quincy on, on next week, but I think that, you know, our city neighbors are going to want to have input into how they're going to enjoy it, and these guidelines have very nice and flowery things about, you know, bike racks and bike mechanics and all this, but without public, and I don't know how this is, and I know that was the public hearing earlier tonight, but, um, without sort of more insight and to, um, you know, how the few of their neighbors, how they'd like to see them grow, especially vertically, I don't know if we can get it forward. Um, is there any particular reason that we're looking to, that this was kind of brought up for, or, or trying to, um, get this through, with the MDCs, there, you know, any timeline you're looking at having this?
Yeah, but I do believe we would like this, approve this calendar, um, so we can get this in place. As we all know, there is a development proposed at Northwood, uh, the, the state, the, the MBTA, uh, at their choice advertised as a, a request for development proposals. Uh, that was chosen last spring. Uh, there has been, uh, some meetings with that development team to get an understanding, uh, one, you know, with, with our city engineers, so they can get an understanding of the site since they've been chose, and then, and two, get an understanding of, uh, what their development is. So oftentimes in the planning department, we do, we do do that. We have, um, three filing meetings, uh, W R for focus in, in development, uh, so there can be some nice back and forth, so, uh, we do know that is, and, and that is, you know, a big emphasis of why we felt it was appropriate, like, to move forward with this to these zoning initiatives. Now, um, your comment earlier about, you know, these are larger areas, you know, we absolutely see that, uh, this ordinance as it's crafted, the districts as they're crafted, uh, we try to keep them directly tied to the MBTA department.
we try to keep them directly tied to the MBTA property partner. Now, we did hear from Mr. Cohen earlier, private landowner in the North Quincy district. There's also a fire station, a sort of a city parcel, as well as a gas station. When we looked at creating that district, we thought about carving that out and just keeping it the same man, but felt with North Quincy High School, as well as the neighborhood and intersection at Hancock and West Water Street, that it was very important that no matter what development comes forward, that it reconnects with that area. Not so much the other area, because that's where the rail line way is. There's really no name of immediate adjacent to that site. So that was some of the reasoning of expanding it and including a couple of additional private parcels. The Walston, quote Walston district, again, is just the station itself. There's no private land, although we have had that discussion. In fact, over the years, the planning department is trying to channel some planning resources into Walston, through whether it's through the Politemery Planning Council, whether it's with Mass DOT doing block audits and bike audits into that neighborhood. We've tried to look a little progressively in some of the development proposals that have come forward. But I would agree, this proposed ordinance may not be appropriate to the neighborhoods surrounding our lead stations. Walston is a best example. Moving to the Quincy Adams Station, I think we all recognize it's a very large surface lot adjacent to the garage property. That's connected to the ownership under the Home Depot, Home Improvement Store. With that district, we expanded it to include that Home Depot parcel department owned. Again, there's no neighborhood there as well. We've got the interstate system, the rail line way there. So that's some of the reasoning behind districts themselves. I would agree with you, and I would welcome an opportunity to move it forward, to get back into some of the neighborhoods, maybe North Quincy, maybe Walston, to examine whether we move away from general business fee and are in those zoning conditions. In Walston, we look at a lot of smaller sites, a lot of fractured ownership with a lot of those sites. No real, you know, large development sites, really, other than the statement. In fact, we are contemplating whether some of our experiences with improving the planning in Quincy Center could be also appropriate for Walston. So that's something that we're looking at and could see, you know, in the coming months.
Yeah. And that, but that's not this. So is there anything in the current state of affairs between planning and zoning that would prevent the development from taking place in the North Quincy Park? Like, is there anything in this that we would need? You know, if everything's already fine, to go forward, public meeting, moving forward, what's, what's the actual purpose of this? Or would there be anything preventing development from going forward in that?
Well, I think it's important, and, and just understanding zoning ordinance is obviously with this body. The companion to this, which is the same model we use for downtown, is the design guidelines. That rests with the planning board. And oftentimes, the guidelines, I think, put forward for the city's expectation for private development as it comes forward, and what we expect that private development to encompass. And I, I think that's an extremely important document to let the development community know, to let the zoot team know what our expectations are for the development in, in the North Quincy Station. Some of the benefits of the TOD OBLA district would be the zoot group would work with the planning board directly, not be separated amongst the zoning board or the planning board for site management. It will consolidate the permitting review. We think that is a very important factor. It also removes some of the dimensional setbacks. That, again, allows for, we think, optimum development opportunities. And the parking, now, as, I understand it, the zoot team will be developing a structured parking facility in that lot to carry existing commuter parking. And residential uses will be developed adjacent to that. That is the prime example of an opportunity to benefit from shared parking. As we all know, parking is, is, it costs money. And the commuters, during the day, will go home, present, will go home, do their jobs. And there is, and on weekends, there is the opportunity to really apply some of the reduced parking ratios. It is one unit per block. There's also a slight difference from what we did in downtown. There's no retail requirement for downtown parking. There is a requirement here. So it, it is a little bit more stringent on the parking than what is the requirement of Quincy Center.
So you would take that as a no?
Then this needs to be in place for the North Quincy development?
Yeah, I'm saying, what, what is preventing development from taking place in that block? Do you need this ordinance? And what I'm just hearing is that these two documents, this ordinance and these guidelines are separate. Basically, the guidelines, you know, you can tell anyone if they need to put trees and bike racks, et cetera. But this ordinance is threshold on a couple of other things.
I don't think it's threshold on anything.
Okay. I mean, please elaborate. What, what I'm saying is, did you answer the question? I mean, do you...
I've mentioned, as it currently stands, the proposal, which we have not seen official filings.
Right.
We'll, we'll have to see. That's something the developer will come forward with. Currently, right now, it's zoning business fee. So height limit to 10 stories, that could be just a special permit grant by the planning board, versus having to go to a separate board, zoning board for that. Now, that's one dimensional requirement, it's dimensional setbacks, you know, probably those types of things. Again, this consolidates all of those zoning requirements and puts it as a special permit required by the zoning board.
Okay. Well, those are my questions. Thanks very much. Again, no, for, I'm not totally comfortable in forward this tonight. I hope that, you know, there's an opportunity for more public comment. You know, there's no actual need to move forward, and there's nothing preventing, you know, the development that is proposed, without any current design or anything before, or any... Thank you.
Mr. Walker, Representative in the Mayor's Office.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to add to what Rob said, even during his job, explaining this, I just want to be very clear that even under the new zoning, the developer will have the right under existing zoning to go that option. This, this provides a different pathway. Much like the downtown exists, there is a permitting pathway through the early development plan, through the certificate of existence and process of planning board. If the developer chooses not to go down that path, they're not required to go through the underlying zoning. That process is obviously a little more arduous, but it will force that this process, what, in the creation of this new zone, does exactly that. It creates a path. One thing, one thing abundantly clear is that this does not eliminate the council authority or the mayor's authority, under any circumstances, the rights that the city has over consent given to the air rights at AT Station. Doesn't change that at all. Basically, all this does is create the pathway to where this administration, the planning department, and this body has long believed that it should belong to a greater extent, and that's within the planning board process. And I just want to add one other thing. The design guidelines are not a document of this body, they're not legislated. Those are administered and approved by the planning board. So if it's a willing, a desire for there to be more public input on design guidelines, and certain planning problems, so the mayor's office is open to have an accession relative to design guidelines as they relate to the ordinance. But in the ordinance, basically, it's a, it's a circle. The ordinance refers to references design guidelines as approved by the planning board. The design guidelines themselves, not subject to the ordinance. That makes sense, Counselor.
So the design guidelines could exist anyway, if you just call it that?
Excuse me, you would be done, sorry.
So with the design guidelines as set forward, both could go forward and we need not vote in?
You would need to vote on the ordinance that references the existence of design guidelines, that references the utilization of design guidelines, what those design guidelines, guidelines are specifically. That's in the jurisdiction of the planning board and the planning board.
Right. So, okay. But the point is that, I feel like we're talking about re-zoning three different, very distinct areas with regards to the one project that we currently publicly have in mind. And these design guidelines can exist irregardless, sorry to find a word, regardless of this ordinance?
Well, no, because you would need the planning board process, you need this, a process like this, that exists through the planning process to have design guidelines. Right now, I am a developer, I will own, and I want air rights at Quincy Adams, and I can manage the project. I'm going with the underlying, underlying zoning. There is no other, there's no OBLA district, there are no design guidelines. They don't exist. This creates a process where the design guidelines do exist, and that is the key piece of this.
Yeah, I mean, like, I sort of get it. I'm still just, I'm having a difficult time by saying the, the three distinct neighborhoods that we're talking about.
Right.
And whether they're neighborhoods or, or just the MBTA zones, they're still very distinct areas that we're trying to bucket into one place. And now that we've gotten to thinking about it, we had a, you know, public comment up here talking about the parking and traffic. And the mayor's office was, you know, gracious enough to just release some RFPs on some engineering firms that are going to look at citywide problems, what's going on, how to fix it going forward. And, you know, I just had a couple of meetings over the past few weeks, and that's the only thing I'm hearing about. And the last thing that, you know, anybody really wants to hear about is 10 certain projects going up when they can't even fix parking problems with two family homes in the neighborhood. So, you know, I think this is something that needs deeper consideration and thought, as well as all the process, they put meetings, and then, you know, application of this traffic requirement. Thank you.
Thank you. One of the things that came out from those particular projects, that remained in the streetworks, was the design guidelines that we did implement in downtown. There's a lot more to be done. What I look at is, the city as a master developer versus individual developers, get that whole piece of looking at the OBLA, the society guidelines brings, brings to the table, it implements it at the Deveris, Trenton Districts, right? So would we want this area to downtown? We just set the table on that. So that's what I'm always seeing the design guidelines. Probably the same, or yesterday, it was a positive recommendation from the planning department. They had suggested an amendment. The amendment was to change Section 8.5.3, minimum lot size from five acres to one acre. If you want to comment on that, Mr. Stevens.
Yes, as it was originally written, five acres was the minimum lot size. Further analysis of the Walston Station in particular, the total district of the Walston Station is eight point two acres. Now, that's the shape of the district, as you can see and show on that map. That includes the rail line way and, and roadway network used to do that. So we feel actually the reality, you know, if, once this is applied to the stations present board, is that we're not going to see super large mega development. We're more likely to see, you know, smaller commuting sites developed, particularly at Walston. So we believe to encourage folks to come in under the TOD OBLA district, minimum lot size of one acre, which is about forty three, forty three thousand square feet, would be appropriate.
And one of the, probably if we codify our zoning ordinance, is that the possibility to be used back by the person who took practice in the city. And we've made a lot of progress in looking for this. We've got most of the use. So I've made a motion to approve Councilor, close this question for the regular meeting, bring this back up, try to regulate. Right. So on the motion to approve the amendment altering 8.5.3, minimum lot size for five acres.
On the motion, Counselor.
Next.
Hold on, to go down a little?
Yes, what, you were gonna?
Counselor uses a personal resistance.
No, I, I wanted to adjourn the committee meeting and open the regular meeting.
Oh, that's it?
Yes.
Oh, I do think you were opting off the recommendation.
Well, no, no, no. I did put a motion out there so we could just talk about it. But I do want to adjourn this question.
Right.
If that's okay with you.
No, I can hold.
Yeah, no, and we'll open it back up this morning. Okay. So the speed of the labor we're going to do is close the ordinance meeting meeting, and that, I'll two goes, Counselor.
Really, recessed?
Resessed, no, we're closing the ordinance committee meeting. Closing the ordinance meeting is opening a regular meeting. To be continued. Regular specialty meeting.
Continue the discussion.
So just continue the discussion.
Continue discussion, no motion, or reasonable motion.
Yes, that's right. Good.